All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Can you please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting? May I have a motion to open the school committee meeting?
So, motion.
Second.
We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And we'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Could you please stand?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for our own.
First item is the Consent Agenda. Everything listed in the Consent Agenda was distributed in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have any requests for something to be removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed or voted on separately? May I have a motion to approve and accept the items listed in the Consent Agenda, including the minutes for the August 26th, 2025 meeting?
So, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Unopposed. Dr. Bailey, do we have anyone signed up for delegation?
I don't think so.
No? So, seeing no old business, Dr. Bailey, I'll turn this over to you for new business.
Okay. So, first, I just wanna thank the school committee members who attended our convocation at the start of the year. We had Secretary of Education Patrick Tutwiler with us as our keynote, and school opening was very smooth in terms of our PD days, the students coming in, the staff arriving. It's been great. The first order of business is our Title I Services Coordinated Job Description. We had a very old one, and we're just updating it, and I would just need a vote to accept the changes.
So, given that, may I have a motion to approve the update to the Title I Service Coordinated Job Description?
So.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Unopposed.
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Mrs. Chesney and Mrs. Pacetto, our AES principals. They are going to be talking about multi-tiered system of supports, otherwise known as MTSS. And this is the focus of our of our school year. We're trying to really hone in and strengthen those services. And, you know, we had a reading specialist cut in our last round of cuts last year, so we're really making sure that we're very efficient in this whole process.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and School Committee. This evening, we will be discussing the multi-tiered system of supports at a big elementary school.
So, we're going to be going over the why and how of MTSS, the cycle, and some resources that are available to us, and of course, how it connects.
Relentless.
So, MTSS is a framework that makes sure all students gets what they get, what they need. It's a combination of academic, social, emotional, and behavioral supports, beginning from a core instruction at Tier One, moving from a supplemental instruction at Tier Two, and finally intensive instruction at Tier Three, so that everyone can receive the supports that they need.
So, we wanna make sure, as Dr. Bailey had just mentioned, given that we unfortunately did lose a reading interventionist, that every student gets that correct support that they need. And we do that by starting off with benchmarking. That helps to identify those students that need a particular intervention. Then, we decide on what would be the best route to go to provide that specific intervention to those students. And then, there's progress monitoring involved throughout at different variables. We have data meetings to help us decide who are the students that we wanna target. We don't necessarily talk about every single student that might fall into that category of eligibility, but we do have teachers discussing data, looking at benchmarking, looking at progress monitoring, and seeing if their interventions work, and we're working on tightening it up a little bit this year.
So, how are we doing it over at AES? So, we do, we did have the addition of the math interventionist in 2024-25. We have the formation of the Dyslexia Action Team with the Dyslexia Action Plan. That also brought some focused attention to early identification and intervention. We had grant-funded interventions such as high dosage tutoring in reading and math. We have improved data tracking systems by refining in-house systems to monitor student progress. This year, we're looking at professional development in early numeracy interventions and MTSS, so that teachers really can understand what MTSS is. Families receive student benchmark reports three times a year. We're also building a database as well as a storage system for materials, so that teachers can access them. We're committed to research-based practice and continuously seeking evidence-based instructional materials, as well as staff training. And as Ms. Chesney spoke, we have five data meetings with teachers in an individual manner, one-on-one, so that we can discuss their specific data of the students that are in front of them.
Okay. And this slide, this is basically a visual of what I was describing before with the benchmarking, how then we decide on what the support is, and progress monitoring to see if those those supports are working, and then we repeat that process.
So, MTSS for academic resources. Tier One is the core instruction. So, it's the foundations, the wonders, these, the curriculum that you've been hearing from Mr. Jerry all these years, and this, invisions, math. Tier Two would be your supplemental, and those are evidence-based instructional strategies, along with resources selected that are based specifically on student needs, continuing to align them with the resources in the Tier One core. Same thing with the Tier Three intensive. And again, they're evidence-based instructional strategies.
Moving on to our social-emotional tiers, social-emotional learning tiers. We, as you know, the elementary school got trained last year in responsive classroom, and we are continuing to intensify our efforts by working together in our staff meetings, in our CSTs, to strengthen that core instruction, which includes a daily morning meeting, academic choice, and other take-a-break type of interventions. We also have additional, little, less intensive than, say, working with a school adjustment counselor, but individual behavior plans or sticker charts, things like that, agreements, additional modelings, you know, all of these coming out of that next level or tier with responsive classroom. And then, of course, our intensive would be that one-on-one interaction with the school adjustment counselor, whatever the services that the students need.
All of these align to the Acquiescent Public Schools Strategic Plan, with specifically achieving academic excellence for all students, implementing a consistent instructional model, aligning curriculum assessments, and more specifically, MTSS is specifically articulated into our strategic plan. So, it's written right into that strategic plan, as well as creating thriving social-emotional experiences with supportive school environments, aligning SEL resources, and finally strengthening community partnerships, and specifically with embedding parent participation.
Are there any questions for us?
Not a question, but just a comment. I just like how it's all encompassing everything. Every, you know, in the district that I came from, it's like ELA is a push, and that's the only thing they focused on. So, seeing it in all different areas is.
Well, it makes a difference, because if some of the SEL. Especially if they're going social-emotionally, then they're going to have such a hard time.
Yeah. It's just really nice to see, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay. Next, I wanna talk about backpack donation from Why Not Care. And if you remember, last year, we had that organization show up at a school committee meeting. They were unable to make it today, but I do have a picture of them delivering their backpacks from the summertime. They usually pack between 20 and 25 backpacks, and they're stuffed. And it's all, they take all of our teachers' list, and they get exactly what the kids need. And, and we have families that were very appreciative. We're sending a thank you to them again, but I just wanted you to know that we continue that partnership with Why Not Care. Do you have any questions on that?
No, but we certainly appreciate it, and know that the families appreciate it, so that's fantastic.
Definitely so.
And then, the last, the last thing I have is, obviously, tonight, we're not going to talk about the high school tuition agreements, but since we have two members absent, I will be sending out some choices for dates for a workshop, and we will discuss the high school tuition agreements at our next workshop, but I'll be adding that to the schedule, so that we can talk about that.
Yeah, I just would echo, I think, Dr. Bailey, I spoke and thought, just given, you know, the importance and the magnitude, probably best to have a workshop where we could have the dedicated session to having that, as opposed to trying to fit it in a meeting when we have other things here. So, it just gives us maybe a little bit more flexibility to have a lengthier discussion, so.
Yeah, I think it'll be really helpful for putting together a more, kinda like a cohesive plan moving forward that's well laid out, and people know what to expect.
Totally. A timeline, I think, and, you know, all those things, because there's a lot even that has to happen once we make a decision in terms of negotiations and those kinds of things. So, kinda knowing what to expect and timing will be good.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And that's all I have for tonight.
So, do we, I know Mr. Missler couldn't make the meeting, that's great. Do we have Mr. Patrino?
Actually, I just wanna highlight from Mr. Missler's report, he wanted me to thank all the staff and administration, and also a special thank you to his tech team for continuing to do an outstanding job, especially at the start of the year. It was quite a heavy lift. He wanted everyone to know that we have a lot of families signing up for Chromebook insurance, and it's been a great turnout this year. The window is still open until October 1st, so I just wanna encourage families, if you haven't done so yet, please check out our website to sign up. And with our security updates, Mr. Missler was hoping to roll out the Vector Single Sign-On by the end of this month, but they've already completed it with an automatic sync with our Aspen system. And again, it's just much more efficient with the EditVal system, as well as tying that into Aspen. So, he continues to do great work in the district. But that is, he's sorry he couldn't make it tonight, he had a family illness, so.
Yeah, well, we certainly appreciate the efforts of all of the staff, and know that for Patrick and his team, the technology at the start of the year is a big lift, so we appreciate all the work that that team is doing as well, so thanks.
Excellent. I need ahead of schedule.
Yes.
Good.
As always.
So, do we have business manager? The floor is yours.
Good evening. I have quite a few things on my list, so I'll kinda go quickly through them. Didn't wanna take up the entire night, but basically FY25 budget is closed, the town's closed out the budget. And as we spoke before, as we're closing it out, you know, we balance off against, you know, trying to use up all of our grant funds and all of our other sources of funds to our budget. In doing so, we had some turnbacks to the town that went back to them. Basically, we had a sped supplement that was requested back beginning of the year that, due to changes in the year, we didn't need it all, so that went back to them, $186,000. Unused high school tuitions, there was agreement that whatever we don't use, we turn back on those. There was another $81,000. And then, between personnel changes and some vacancies, we turned back another $190,000. So, we turned back quite a bit of money this year to the town, which eventually will become free cash on the town side. So, that helps both of us out on the future budgets. The, now that's done, I'll be working on the end-of-year report, which is what Department of Ed requires from us. They want it by September 30th. It's a tough deadline to meet, but we basically try and get all the data to them in time. That basically explains all of us spending across all of our categories that they then use to compare us to all the other school districts in the state. So, working on that. I created what I call my FY26 Budget Monitoring Tool. So, I have a tool that I go in and I look across the entire budget, look for any line items that are either close to being overspent or might be overspent, go and see if something maybe was classified, so that while the year is going, we can move it back and put it back in place where it should be, and keep an eye on everyone's budget to make sure that we go through the year without any issues. So, I do that on a monthly basis. Grant update, we got pretty much the same amount of money as we did last year. I have a page on that that shows that we still get the Early Childhood, the ECSE grant, the IDEA grant, which is our largest, that's for the Special Academics, $207,000. Last year was $310,000, before that was $325,000, so it goes up and down. They look at our population when they approve these grants. Title I, we actually increased a little this year, $131,000 from $109,000, so that helps us out quite a bit for our students. And same thing with Title II and Title IV. They're roughly about the same amount of money, so we're doing well on the, on the grants. The FY23 audit was completed finally by our outside audit firm of Robert Brown Company. So, there's 10 or 11 items on there that they had questioned, or audit firms questioned, why has this charged this account? Why, you know, they suggested they should move one account to another, so I'll respond to all of those. I actually had a conversation with Patrick McIntyre, since that was all from under him, so he could tell me why some of it was done. So, that'll be submitted shortly to them in Department of Ed. They're currently doing the FY24 budget. They're a little behind, because they should be completed with it by now, but we just sent them off some more documents today on the FY24, so hopefully they'll get that underway. And I don't anticipate any real, anything material in the audit, our books are pretty The October 1 is coming up. That's where we'll see how we end up enrollment this year to enrollment last year. That'll, you know, plays on our funding, on our student expenses. So, I'm monitoring that, making sure that hopefully we pick up every possible student we can, and then categorize correctly as to whether or not they're English language learner, whether they're low income, whether they're special ed, because if one of those categories brings in more funds to the district. Busing update, busing has started off well, it's continuing well. We're still doing a lot of work, we're getting a lot of calls on people who are moving, asking if buses can come to their homes or not. And so, Bonnie in my office has been working morning, noon, and night, trying to get everyone in a good place. She looks at the map, she sees where there's no sidewalks, where kids have to be picked up. But we're trying to make sure that everyone's safe, and at the same time, you know, keep the bus routes moving. So, there's been nothing that we haven't been able to solve to this point. The boilers are both put, all put back together, and they're up and running. We're doing a little more maintenance, the one in the middle school, but they should have that done in probably another week, but that went well. We had a repair that we did this summer, so that went well, so that's looking good. The, the summer guest program, the youth employment services, where we receive the students, the students, the young kids from the town, that was a great success for us. We, we took everyone that would, that they would give us, the town paid for them, which is great. We had them clearing the walkways that lead to the soccer fields. They painted all the yellow curbing, they painted the white crosswalk lines, they even painted the elementary school office, which was great, because usually we'll go out to bid and have someone do that for us, they painted that. They did classroom moves, they did some grass cutting, some weeding, paper shredding. They cleared those big, what they called Conex boxes, those big storage boxes that we have, they were renting by the month. We went through, cleared them out, got rid of whatever was trash, and consolidated, and removed them from our property. So, we're not paying rent, and they're not unsightly. The two that are left are ours, they belong to us, we're gonna move them towards the back of the bus parking lot to get them out of, basically kind of out of sight. Those become our permanent storage for things like the riding lawnmower, things like that, anything that's pretty much gasoline or whatnot, those will be put out there. So, that'll make the, the campus look nicer, better, we'll have, you know, the lawn growing in well. Fire inspections, the walkthrough of the buildings were completed by the chief. They're coming on the 24th, and I assume in the morning, because they're gonna basically set off the alarms and make sure the alarm panels are all working correctly. They'll do that while there's no students in the school, but we don't anticipate any problem with that, that seems to be going well. The traffic lights out on the street, they're up and running. We had some hiccups at the beginning, but Patrick Mustler stepped in and reprogrammed the program, and it's working perfect now. Where they go one at the right time, they blink, and they tell the cars the speed as they're going by, so that they know, basically, they need to slow down to 20 miles an hour. Starting to research and learn about a five-year capital plan that we're gonna need, so I'll at some point be asking people for what they might think really needs to be put on that, but I'd like to put that together, because I think that's something that we need to literally present to the town and show them that aside from needing, you know, some HVAC systems in schools, we need other items. So, speaking of the HVAC system, there was a meeting with the state delegation to try and help us, to see what we can do for funding for those. They're, all parties agreed, and they're all interested in helping, they're all gonna support the situation. I, myself, and the chair of the Finance Committee, met with a contractor who built a school in Carver, and went through and evaluated, and said that the train proposal's actually pretty good. So, now we're looking at how to move that forward. I spoke to the town's investment bankers on the project, gave them all the parameters, I gave them some of my input, and they're now gonna try and prepare for us a, a funding schedule that we can afford, that will work for us. So, they know the town, they know the bonds we have outstanding, so they can put something together that should hopefully work for us, and that'll help us move the project forward.
Aldo, not to interrupt you, but just curious, do you have an estimated timing of when you would expect to get something back from them?
Next week.
Perfect, thank you.
I asked them to, through, quickly. So, I also asked Train to update their numbers, because their numbers are from a year ago. And if we're talking doing this project, it's another year from now, so we're talking about a two-year lag, so. And I asked the investment bankers to basically increase the amount we're talking about, so that if they do it before I get the Train updated numbers, we'll at least be on the ballpark, have something moved forward for the town to evaluate. The bid went out, and the walkthrough was done for the water infiltration of the gym closet, the elementary school. The bids are due tomorrow for that project. At the same time, as we open the bids, we'll take the lowest bidder and submit an article to the town. It'll come from myself or the superintendent requesting to be on the fall agenda and the amount of money we're going to need. Hoping the town approves it, I already talked with the contractor that I wanna start immediately, so if we can start. I thought the town meeting would be early October, but it looks like it's at the end of October. So, we'll be starting probably, if it all goes well, the beginning of November, so we'll push it to get it done by Thanksgiving, because they said they need about two weeks to do it. So, I'm hoping the weather is still good at that point, but we should hopefully, once and for all, clear that problem up.
Yeah, and I don't know, this happened not that long ago to get support for that, so I don't know that we've talked about that in the school committee meeting, but I think that because the school did also return a fair amount of money this year, that we were able to work with the town, I think, to get alignment that we would fix the gym project, so that's a positive thing. Hopefully, that's coming sooner rather than later.
Correct, that's correct, from the money we returned, they said that you felt they were giving to us. So, I think correcting that water problem would be a big improvement. Along those same lines, I was talking to the facility staff here, and we are going to go room by room through the elementary school, and start ourselves on the interior, looking at the, you know, the tiles that have a lot of damage, opening them up, taking a look, seeing what could possibly be leaking. If there's anything we can do to repair it from within, if there's something that's, you know, if it's just a humidity issue, something we can correct, and then put new ceiling tiles back in. And the same respect, we have a company that's gonna come and seal any leaks that we have on the exterior, on the roof of the buildings. They were evaluated a few months back, and from their, from their photos, you can see areas that basically need patching, they need new glue, so they're gonna come in, they're gonna do that. We have them do both schools, and the, most of the elementary is under warranty, so anything under warranty, we're not gonna touch, because we'll contact that contractor if necessary. The only thing I saw under the warranty was that there was some, I don't know if it's nails or fascinants coming back up through the roof, which probably isn't covered by the warranty, but we'll discuss that with them. But trying to make the roofs watertight, make that closet, the gym closet watertight, at least eliminate more water coming in. As we go classroom by classroom through the school, we should hopefully be able to fix a lot of the, the issues that people feel they have. And then, if everything goes well with the train contract, we should be in great shape. So, that's how I explained the other meeting with the state, with the town, that went very well. And we have moved the refrigeration project for the cafeterias to the spring, once school gets out. We're talking with the contractors on that. They're gonna create quite a bit of dust when they open that up, and we can't get a period of time where there's no students having lunch, so we talked them about moving it up to the spring. So, basically, I wanna schedule it now for the day after school ends, for them to come out, and they'll finish that project, probably taking three or four weeks to do it. But it'll be great, because we can move all the equipment out of there, they can go in and basically demolish what's there, bring everything in new, we can clean it, get everything back. Otherwise, we'd be looking at working at night, cleaning in the morning, working at night, cleaning, it's, it's not a smart way to do the project, so. And finally, every year, I likely have a breakfast count. We started out last year at this time, serving about 300 breakfasts a day in the first five days, the first week of school. This year, we had 552, so we're up quite a bit in the breakfasts. Same thing with the lunches. I'm sorry, that was, I'm sorry. Breakfast was 220 last year in the middle school, and 300 in the elementary, and those both went up to 552 and 325, so quite a bit. And the lunches were at 1,000 at the elementary school, 1,092, went up to 1,273, so we're up on the lunches. And the same thing with lunch in the middle school, 1,085 to 1,427, so increased quite a bit. And that's good for us, because the more that we feed the students, the more government reimbursements that we get, the better commodities we get, the larger the orders are. And the money that comes in that's profit allows us now to start replacing a lot of equipment that's in our kitchens there, 30, 40-years-old lots of equipment. I know that before I came, they replaced many of the ovens, but there are rice cookers, there are all kinds of utensils in there, so we can begin and replace all that, getting new equipment in there, as we generate more funding through the food, the lunch program. So, we're hoping to, again, push that and get it even higher numbers. That's it.
I may have a couple of questions and a comment, and any else?
Sure.
I just wanna confirm, so for the FY23 audit findings, you were, there were 10 or 11 items, you're not anticipating any of those were material findings at this point?
No.
In terms of the boiler, because you talked about boiler repair, how old are those boilers, and do we have an assessment of, of what do we anticipate is the life of those, of those boilers?
The builders were built in 1971. The boilers, I'm told, have about a 40-year useful life, so I don't know if they were ever upgraded or repaired since 1971, but the company that commanded looked at them, said to Jake, our facilities director, that they feel there's maybe two, three, four years left them with the way we're running them. So, the HVAC project, if it comes into fruition, the boilers would use as a backup, which means they could probably go 10 more years at that rate if we wouldn't go that route. Otherwise, Jake asked one of the companies to give us a written evaluation on them, so we're waiting for that to come through. So, one will be what the life will be, and the other tool will be what it costs to replace them. Because at least I know, I looked, at the middle school, these boilers will fit out the double doors. The elementary school, I think they were built in the building before the boards, we had to cut open the wall probably to get them out, so I'm hoping that we can extend their life and go with the, the new HVAC system in the buildings.
But otherwise, then I would imagine part of your five-year capital plan would include how we're gonna address that.
Yes, exactly, it would.
And I think it's gonna be on the top of the list, along with HVAC.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, here's my comment, and I saw that the police chief is, I think, retiring, so we're gonna have somebody new. I suggest maybe we look at an upcoming meeting to have another conversation, as we do most years, about security, and whether we need to have additional conversations with the, with the police chief, you know, with a new incoming police chief. But here's an observation I have about the traffic lights. Because there's a long run from one end to the other end, I don't have empirical data, I'm not sitting out there monitoring the speed with my gun, but it feels like because you go through one side and it's a long run, that people are going quite fast still there, so I think it's something we need to look at addressing moving forward. That's my observation.
Okay, I do have a meeting with the new chief, so I will let him know that we can definitely plan an executive session with the school committee, and I'm sure he'll be very open to that.
Just on that, I did see the full summary of the last. Just on that, I did see the full sermon over last week.
Yeah, and it's, I'm sure they do, I just, because I happen to live close by, I think I observe it quite often. And even myself, sometimes, because there's a long run, you have to be conscious of, like, you're still in the school zone. And so I think it's something we need to look at, but. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we're, you know, you're pretty early in the process of even assembling a five-year capital plan. We know that the HVAC system and the boilers are going to be items on there for sure. Are there any others that you anticipate at first glance, including?
Nothing substantial. The roofs, I mean, I know one roof's brand new, this roof here, I think from what I've saw from photographs, it looks pretty good, but that might be on there, part of the five-year plan. The exterior of the buildings, I didn't see any cracks, I walked around. I did see some issues by the entrance of the middle school, where it looks like the plaster on the exterior is falling off. So it looks like water got in, there's some bubble-type lights on the roof there, panels, and water must be infiltrating through there and causing all the fallout. So that, I think, is a pretty good repair that's going to be done. Aside from that, I mean, the floor tiles look like they're in great shape in the buildings. The mechanicals, from what I've seen, I've done a couple of walkthroughs through the buildings, they look, the buildings look like they're in pretty good shape. So hopefully, it's just going to be, those items that you know have a useful life, like the unit beds in the classrooms, they don't have so much for useful life. But the HVAC system, I mean, that's a big repair that's done there. But even the parking lot seems to be in pretty good shape.
Very good, thank you.
Are there any school committee member report? So there was some communication and information, their air quality report for August, superintendent welcome-back email, AES newsletter, FMS welcome-back district newsletter. Any questions or comments on any of the communications? No? Okay, so there's no executive session tonight? I think that's it, right? No other items? So as we mentioned, we will look for an opportunity to have a workshop here relative to the high school decision, but we will adjourn. Our next school committee meeting is on Tuesday, October 14, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the FMS library. May I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
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 Okay, meeting has adjourned, thank you.